Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Winger?
Here.
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Woods?
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Here.
The cleric forum, next is the approval of the minutes of meeting June 22nd, 2014. Do I have a motion?
Make it second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is report and recommendation case number 14-V7, 300 Baumann Court, building height variation. Mr. Forrest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The petitioner are the prospective purchasers for the existing building at 300 Baumann Court, which was most recently occupied by DeVry, prior to that Rockwell. And DCT Industrial operating LLC is proposing to purchase that property. One of the conditions is that they're going to remove the existing building and put a new building up on the site. It's going to be an industrial warehouse building, and they indicate that to meet current market demands, the new building needs a total clear height of 32 feet on the interior. With the roof structure and parapet added to that height, the total building height will be approximately 42 feet. The UDO limits the building height to no more than 30 feet, as does, I believe, the restrictive covenants in there, so they would need a 12-foot variation. So staff had recommended to the CDC that the variation appears to meet all the standards for a variation. The CDC voted six to nothing to pass this variation and move it on to you.
Do we have any questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I have two questions. John, what does this company do?
It's going to be, from what I understand, a large warehouse building where they just, you know, bring freight forwarder. I believe there might be somebody here from the petitioner.
Yeah, I'm here at DCT Industrial. We own and operate.
You can speak.
Yeah, if you could step up to the mic and give us your name and address.
Yeah. Brian Roach from DCT Industrial. We're based in Oakbrook, headquartered in Denver, Colorado. We own and operate industrial buildings around the country.
So, can I do a follow-up?
Go ahead.
So, more or less, it's going to be a warehouse, storage, pickup, take, come back and forth? I mean, or is it storage, or what?
It'll be, well, there'll certainly be, it's a warehouse for general distribution, but will also accommodate users that have an office requirement and then light industrial, typical industrial use.
And then the other thing, maybe you could follow up with me, John, is this the building that we vacate that parking lot to? Is this, if I am mistaken, is this the road that we are giving to them?
Well, this is a different purchaser, so I know earlier when the other company had a contract on it, they had come to the city council seeking vacation of Baumann Court. They are no longer into the, in the picture. So, again, DCT, this is a second company that's wanting to purchase this property, and whether or not they would come to the city council asking for the vacation of Baumann Court, we haven't quite gotten that far yet.
But, I'll follow up with a Baumann Court here. I thought we gave the clearance to buy the Baumann Court, they took it, I believe an attorney drew up all the paperwork. Is that, is that being withdrawn for Baumann Court now?
That deal was never consummated, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Jacob?
I just have one question. How long has that building been vacant?
Oh, I would, probably about a year and a half.
Okay. With that, I'd like to make the motion to approve case 14-V7, 300 Baumann Court, the height variation. Thank you.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is report and recommendation case number 14-V8, 331 North Oak Building setback variation. Mr. Forrest.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome back.
Yes, it's good to be here. The petitioner is proposing to construct a new detached single-family home on this piece of property. This lot was platted in 1925 and had a single-family residence that was built on it in 1938, which was subsequently demolished in 2007. Previous residence that was on the property was located about nine and a half feet from the corner front yard line. See, this is, this is a corner lot, so with a corner lot, they are restricted to having to observe two front yard setbacks, which really does impact the utility of a lot, particularly in the R4 district where we have our 50-foot wide lots. So the petitioner is coming forward requesting that the city allow him to go with a...
Fifteen?
Yes, that's it. Fifteen-foot front yard setback on the south side of the property, which is the commercial street side, as opposed to the required 25 feet. Again, this was presented to the CDC. It does appear as though the property meets all the standards that would be required to grant the variation, and CDC did approve it 6-0. I have been out in the neighborhood to check some of the existing structures that are in place, and it does seem like there are, actually, the house right across the street to the west of this is built without observing that 25-foot setback, as are a couple of other properties right in, within a couple of block radius of this property. So, it's not like it would be anything really unusual and would impact the character of the neighborhood.
Do we have any questions? Alderman Sizmarsky?
I make a motion to pass case number 14-V8.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is report and recommendation case number 13-V4, Oakwood Commerce Center variation, amendment to the 700 North Wooddale Road. Mr. Forrest?
Thank you once again. Back in 2013, an application was filed by the owners of 700 Wooddale Road. They had come to the building department and seeking a permit to increase the parking on that property. And while staff was reviewing the plans, it was discovered that there is a restrictive covenant in the Forest Creek subdivision, and there was subsequently an ordinance adopted by the city at the same time Forest Creek was subdivided that mirrors certain restrictions of those restrictive covenants. I mean, technically, if the city did not have an ordinance, we could be in a position to issue the permit, but the property owner would still have to work with the association since there is that covenant restricting certain uses on that property. The one in question is the fact that when they subdivided and created Forest Creek Industrial Park, they required a 75-foot building setback for those buildings that front on Wooddale Road. And the 50 feet of that, that's immediately adjacent to Wooddale Road, could not contain parking. So the properties were subsequently developed. This is going to actually impact three other properties that are on Wooddale Road. You've got this group of buildings, and to the north of that, you have the old AEC building, which is now occupied by Power Solutions. And then there's another property at 880 North Wooddale Road, and then up at the north end, you have the courtyard. All of these properties could prospectively be impacted by this, you know, if the city decides to change or rescind this section of the ordinance. I did, I'm sorry that this was not in your packet, I'm sure it was meant to be in there, but I included a copy of ordinance 1151. I handed it out on the dais. Seventy-five percent of this document is basically what they call a meets and bounds description, which they used to use to describe property, and that's, you know, go 100 feet to the rock that looks like Abraham Lincoln, and then turn left and go 1,000 feet to the fence post. So most of this ordinance is contained with that. But if you go to the second page, the parking schedule was one of the things that was modified and adopted at the time they subdivided this. And that allows for one parking space per 250 square feet of building. That was actually more liberal at that time, or I'm sorry, it was a little more restrictive because the ordinance, our zoning ordinance at the time only required one parking space for every 333 square feet. So this actually did allow more parking to be put into place at the time. And if you go to the last page of the document, I've highlighted the section that we are here really to discuss. The second half of this paragraph talks about, "All lots adjacent to Wooddale Road shall have a minimum front yard adjacent to Wooddale Road of 75 feet with no parking within the first 50 feet adjacent to Wooddale Road, which 50-foot area shall be landscaped and bermed as a buffer." Now, we have the owner of this building. This building's been vacant for a couple of years. Most recently, I believe, it was Household Finance occupied that building. They had some parking issues, and they actually were using a remote parking lot that they entered into a lease agreement with the park district on that's up near the tennis courts, up near Wooddale Road and Seavert. So parking has been an issue with these buildings for quite some time. The current owners have been having trouble leasing this building. They've been vacant for several years, and apparently the biggest issue is the lack of parking there. So as I said, they did come in and present a plan. They want to increase the parking by a few hundred parking spaces, but to do that, they're going to need to encroach into this 50-foot buffer zone and do some pretty major restructuring of the job site. They'll have to clear some trees that are there, they'll have to deal with some stormwater issues, there may be some lot coverage issues. But tonight, really, the only thing that we're focusing on is whether or not the city council wants to consider revising or repealing sections of ordinance 1151 to allow that parking within 50 feet of Wooddale Road.
John, a question. So, right now, the existing parking is greater than the minimum in our UDO? Is that what you said?
Well, the zoning ordinance at the time only required one parking space for every 333 square feet. I think that's the same of what is this today.
Right. So then, our minimum code sets out to build a building that nobody wants, based on everything that's being set. That, that's not a viable building, we're not going to park. Our code allows people to build buildings that other people are going to come in, and that sphere, the year after that, they'll go, we have to expand the parking.
I'm sure that's conceivable, yes. I know somebody is here from the ownership of the building, and I believe you would like to speak and do a presentation as well. Jack, you want to?
I am Jack Reardon. I'm with NAI Hifman. I'm the commercial real estate broker who represents UBS, the owner of Oakwood Commerce Center. We, our parking currently is four per thousand. And what we're seeing in suburban Chicago, not only in Wooddale, but this pressure is everywhere, is to increase densities and allow these tenants to have more people in less amounts of space. And in the suburbs, each person typically comes with parking. There's not a lot, you know, in our building on Wooddale Road, we don't really have very good access to public transportation. So as we've been, HSBC, who took over Household Finance, vacated about two and a half years ago. We probably had 25 to 30 prospects go through the building. We were successful in leasing to US Cellular, took 38,000 square feet. They're currently parking six to seven cars per thousand, because we don't have any other tenants there. The other tenants that we're looking at is people like Wells Fargo, who needs to be at six per thousand. We're looking at HSBC coming back to the village. We're looking at a deal with Quest Diagnostics for 170,000 square feet. They take about half the park. Each one of these tenants and other prospects we've had are constantly looking to try and maximize the parking. So without the parking, we have a very good single-story building. Our location is certainly not ideal. We're neither in Oakbrook and Lombard, nor are we in the middle of Schaumburg. So having said that, we need to come up with a way to increase the density. And so we went through, and we did the plans with John, we submitted them, we found out that we had the Forest Creek Association issue, and we've been trying to work our way through it for, you know, the last couple of years. Having said that, if, if we don't get the parking, I'm not here to say that the building is never going to lease, but I think it's going, we're going to continue to do more of the same. And what just happened with the example of 300 Baumann Court with DCT is, you know, potentially, if the building continued not to lease, ownership would look to come up with an alternative use. That alternative use could potentially, you know, be industrial. Now, it would be a major loss to my owner if they were to go down that path, but also, I think by giving us the parking and leasing up the building, we're looking at about 1,500 white-collar jobs that would be coming with if we can re-lease the property. And so we think, we ask respectively, that you guys consider increasing our parking so that we can try and get our leasing done.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have, you have a question? Okay. I think we have another person that was the original developer, so I'd like to give him an opportunity to...
Correct, yes. John Stotzel was the developer of the property.
Speak on behalf, since he was...
And we are, I want to remind the council too, we're kind of dealing with two separate issues here. I mean, typically, the restrictive covenants is a private agreement between the property owners, and per conversations with the city attorney, the city is not obligated to enforce restrictive covenants. Yet at the same time, what makes this situation a little bit different is that when the restrictive covenants were adopted, the city also adopted this ordinance, which is apart and separate from the restrictive covenants, yet contains certain portions of those, those we are obligated to enforce.
Right. So essentially, we adopt, adopted those covenants as part of our codes?
Not in total, but sections of it, correct.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
What are you, I take it you're going to tell me how you're related to the...
Should I start?
Yeah, if you could first give us your, your name and address.
My name is John Stotzel, S-T-O-E-T-Z-E-L, and the covenants conditions and restrictive, covenants conditions and restrictions were put of record through our company, Illinois Industrial Properties, almost 33 years ago. And I just came to kind of talk through. More question?
What is that?
What is what?
Is it an association? Is it...
Yes, it's a, it's a, an owners' association that's part of the covenants and conditions. It's part of the ordinance that is in, in play here tonight. Does that answer the question?
Okay. Yes.
And what I wanted to do is talk about the history. But first I have to, in deference to full disclosure, Mr. Reardon and I are associates. Jack is actually agent for us on a property that competes with the Oak, Oakwood Commons. But I'm not here in, in a capacity as a broker, or I'm just here as the designated, still the designated president of that association. And what I want to do is talk through the methodology that was used when we first developed this park, and that's why I brought these antique exhibits. This is the, this is the, the property as it was presented in, to Wooddale in about 1981, 82, somewhere in that range, when that ordinance was passed. And you can see that the actual plan had areas, the 50-foot setback is...
John, could you, could you raise those up?
You bet. Where would be the best place to put it?
There's a ledge, there's a ledge. Right, thanks.
Do we have a...
Better? So this, this was the plan before we, we actually knew what was going to go into the park. It was farmland, basically. And the, the intent of creating the ordinance and the intent of creating the owners' association was not only to create something that was a little better park, the village, the city, pardon me, the city always talked about the fact that they wanted something other than centex. They wanted setbacks that were deeper, and they wanted green, and they wanted preservation of, of the, the forest areas that were within the confines of the park. We obviously didn't know, just like Jack doesn't know, who's looking at the, or who's ultimately going to be his tenant, we didn't know who the, the owners were going to be, who the buyers were going to be of the property. So what I show you initially is areas where the retention was intended to be, based on the concept of the, the ownership was going to take some of the retention, and the, the common areas were going to absorb the other part of the, of the retention. So if you needed a five-acre feet of retention, in theory, 60% you'd put on your site, 40% the, the common area would absorb that additional. And before any of these, so we fast-forward to about 1994, and this is the, the development as it looked three or four years after we started. And you can see that the size of this retention pond has increased because as we filled the park, as we created impervious area, parking lots, buildings, et cetera, we needed more retention. But we had to be conscious of how much retention was going to be left in the rest of the park. And one of the other covenants that's, that is part of the, that ordinance is that you can't, you can't cover the site more than 80% with impervious roof, driveway, parking lot, et cetera. And it, it really was a cooperative effort on the part of the village and the developer to determine, for instance, in this case, what we did was instead of having them have any retention on their property, we actually created a small retention pond here and increased the size of this for, for this buyer. And before there was any permit issued, before there was any approval by the city, the stormwater was always taken care of. And that's why I'm here, because as we moved through the process, a number of things happened. First, the, we made a very large sale to the Vantage Companies up here, 65 or so acres, and they created retention ponds up here so that instead of their water going into this pond, although some of it did, they had taken care of more of it on their piece of property. And that was about 1984, 85, somewhere in there, they started doing that work. And then along came the Illinois Department of Transportation and started condemning the property that is now going to be the Elgin-O'Hare Expressway across here. So that eliminated those retention ponds. Now, in theory, the Illinois Department of Transportation or the toll highway authority would have to provide that retention. They can't just cover it up and leave us without the retention. The, the, the next thing that was sort of simultaneous was this area became, and this is the subject of the, the old Motorola building, DeVry, Rockwell. This is Freightliner, now Danberg Bend. This area, we, again, with, in cooperation with the village, we created a retention that was here and eliminated the need to use this. So that was the second thing that happened, or third, I can't remember what I'm on. And, and then came the, the flood in 86, 87. And I think that the, the village will remember because the village lost a tremendous amount of their records because it actually flooded the village hall. And, and if, if it hadn't flooded, flooded the village hall, we'd be able to say, I know that there's enough retention, enough stormwater, to actually handle what they're talking about by creating impervious that would be extremely more dense than what was initially approved. I don't have the records, you don't have the records. I think we can find the records, but I would suggest that that's the kind of cooperation that we need. I'm not against the concept of increasing the parking. I agree with Jack, office needs more parking, but I don't agree that we should just do it without knowing exactly what the base of the retention is, and that's why I came. Yep?
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Do you own a piece of property on the, in the subdivision?
Yeah, I still do.
Where would your property be?
We own all of this, and we still own property over here.
So you own a detention pond?
Yeah.
The association or you?
The, the association, the, the association has not been formed in the, in the, other than the way it was formed in 1981, when the, when the ordinance was passed. So there has not been, so still, the ownership of that land is in the, in the original developer's trust.
The question was, do you own the detention pond or the association?
Who, who's you?
You, John?
No, I'm the, there's a trust that I represent. Is that the question you're asking?
Okay, you're saying you're an association, and you're president of the association?
Right.
You know, I've done some research, and, you know, have you had meetings with the associations of the owners that own the buildings there?
No.
Have you contacted, do these people even know that there is an association?
Yes, they know there's...
Every single owner knows? Probably not.
It's a matter of public record. I'm not obligated to tell them...
You, as far as I'm concerned, I've tried to do some research on the association. Have you had board meetings?
No.
So, I mean, you're, with the parking situation, they have to meet stormwater ordinance, period. So, for you to sit here and say that there's an association, and you're representing the detention ponds, and you don't own a piece of property on it, I don't, and you haven't had any board meetings, I mean, if you're an association, I would think that you would contact the owners and have an association meeting and, and explain to them about what's going on. For, for, since 19, you're going back to 1983. I don't know when you started being president, have they even had, have, do you even have minutes on, on how you were voted on?
The, if you read the, you, you read the ordinances, is that what you said? That's the research you did?
I've done more than that.
Okay. The, the ordinance indicates the, the protective covenants indicates that until 90% of the land, that lots, not the land, are sold, that the developer continues to be in the, in control of the association and doesn't have to have board meetings. That's what the ordinance says. And I'm not, you know, I'm not arguing, I'm not here to be an obstructionist. I'm, I'm here to say that the, that the retention, as it was originally intended, has not been addressed for this piece of property. That's what I'm saying, and, and that's all I'm saying. I'm not saying, "Don't do what you're, what you're, what you propose." I'm saying that it hasn't, and that, that nobody in the village has been able to tell me that actually the records show that from the time, the, as I outlined, the time that the Illinois Department of Transportation condemned that property, that those records indicate that, yes, there is enough retention to do what they're asking to do.
That's, that's why we have engineers.
Okay.
They would tell us, for, for stormwater.
And I've asked, and, and the engineers haven't said that you do or you don't. What, I, I've asked for those records, and, and they haven't been forthcoming.
When the project has...
Okay, hang on. Alderman Lozaro?
I really think that's something for us to, to address before we go ahead and vote on this. Like you were saying, we do have engineers. Engineers make mistakes. I, I really would like to see something before I say yes. That concerned me also.
May I?
And the fact is, is the tollway going to provide the retention that it's taking away? And if they are, I would like to see that too.
Mayor, please.
Well, the tollway's going to have to provide their stormwater for the whole highway. I mean, they're going to have to comply. But I think you answered some of my questions I was going to ask. If you put in the parking, where's the extra storage going to be? I'm sure it has to pass our stormwater ordinance and whatnot. Is that correct, John?
Yes, I mean, all these topics are very relevant, but again, before we would move forward with a full review of a stormwater management plan, the owners want to know if the city is going to consider making revisions to this ordinance to allow them to do it. So if the city decides to move forward and revise this ordinance to allow the parking within... within that area that's now restricted, then of course, like Alderman Wesley said, they are going to have to comply with the current stormwater management ordinance, they're going to have to comply with the zoning ordinance as it relates to lot coverage, they're going to have to comply with the UDO section on any replacement trees that are going to be necessary. So this is basically just the first step of a multi-step process.
Alderman Winger.
Thank you, that was the essence of what I was going to bring up, and that IDOT does have to comply when they remove water storage, that sort of thing, to to replace, and it's our city team that's going to look and ensure that there is water retention on this property. So I am in favor of allowing this to move forward, and 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 that is my motion.
Second. Mayor, please.
John, it was mentioned that here we have, they were allowed eighty percent lot coverage.
Correct.
And they want to go to ninety percent, is that, is that what I'm hearing?
I've just seen some preliminary plans, and I know those plans contain some pervious pavers as part of their proposed parking. But again, until we actually get what are going to be the actual plans, at that point, we will do a full review on them. But again, if the council was going to, or if the council decides not to make these revisions, then it's a dead issue, it's a moot point. So why would we move forward spending money to do reviews?
For nothing.
Correct.
Okay, first, let me say that, you know, I'm in I'm in the same group, I don't mind moving forward as long as we know what we're doing, you know? And everybody says everybody has to take care of the water, but yet we have a lot of flooding, right? So unless somebody in the room can tell me that flooding's subsided or lessened in Wooddale, and we're not spending more money fixing it, so we got the tollway issue, we we've got other parking lots coming in, the city itself was the driver behind creating some of this stuff, and there were reasons for that. I think all we're asking is that we look at what those issues are and not just say, yeah, go ahead and build what you want, and and it sounds like it'll it'll work. Exactly, and that's why we still have floods, right? More and more floods. So I get it. Alderman Jacob.
I'm a little bit torn on this whole thing. Number one, I I kind of would like to be like Frank, I'd like to know, is this going to cause additional flooding, or is it not? And it sounds to me like we really don't have the answer today. I want to help the businesses out, and I want to bring more businesses and more people to town, but if it's going to cause flooding issues and more problems for the town, well, then I'm against it. I mean, do we have an engineer, have we looked at this? Do we know, is this?
Mr. Murmice.
I think what John's trying to say is that nobody's going to put forth the effort to go to the next step unless we put forth the effort to allow this first step. So if it is going to cause flooding, you'll find that out in step two. If you don't go to step two, you're never going to find out anything.
But let me just, has somebody not done some drawings, there's parking lot drawings and and that show what trees they're cutting out, there's landscape plans, so nobody's done a calculation?
We did.
So it seems like there's like some twenty-two pages of plans, but no calculations.
No, we, when we first came through, and we, this was with Ross Clicker, and we did some plans, Ross left, John got involved, and we found out, we didn't know at the time, we were part of the association, started working with John and figured out that we were not going to be able to pass through an amendment to the association bylaws. So we did initial set of plans, then John rejected our application. We re, we came back with new plans, we've done landscaping plans, there can be some lot coverage, but I think what John's saying and we're saying is, if we can't get the setback moved, then we can't increase the parking, and then there's no reason for us to put the application in. I believe we want to work with the village, we're not trying to create flood problems either with pervious concrete, et cetera. So what we would propose is, if you can pass the motion, we still got to go back right now, John, I don't think we have an open application, you rejected us and we need to resubmit, correct?
That's correct.
So we need, you know, we're kind of back to square one. Now, we do have a consultant, we have Brad Hensley, who's unfortunately on vacation, and his partner is, they they came here last time, so we have a parking engineer who's doing the site work, and we'd work in conjunction with John and and the city to try and make something work.
Alderman Lozaro.
You know, I I actually am not going to move on this, as far as, if you're going to do this study, if we say yes right now, and you do the study, we still have the right to reject it. So you're going to be doing the study regardless. The only thing that would change my mind is this study. I I really think if you want this, and I think I'm speaking for some other aldermen up here, I want to know where this water's going to go. We live in Wooddale, we have nothing but headaches with water, we don't want to create another headache. And I'm sorry, if you want this parking lot, as far as I'm concerned, show me the study. You don't want to spend the money, that's up to you.
Well, I don't, but aren't we talking about a bigger issue, isn't it the the park, John, isn't that what you're saying? I mean, we have our site, but our site affects other sites, and you're saying that there's not a master study for all the water, for all the different parcels within the association? So we, our, what we did before was do a parking lot plan, and then we also did a landscape plan to go through trees and so forth, and detention, and do the mathematics behind it, but I don't know if that would solve the problem that you're talking about. I I don't either. Right? I think that the solution, and this is what we talked about, I I think the concept of increasing the parking is the right thing for the piece of property. But I think that you need, as I tried to articulate, I think you need to know ahead of time what the actual, you have to have a base to work from. And ironically, the reason the records aren't here is because there was a flood in this business, in this building, so we don't have those things. So what we're talking about is finding that base, which isn't that difficult, I don't think. I think we can, we can piece together those, those drawings and figure out what the actual retention is at this point in time. And then, you know, from from my perspective, you're doing it the way the village, I'm sorry, the city had started, which was, show me first, we'll approve it, and then then we can go forward with the, but if if the exhibit that I have on this piece of property with ninety percent coverage, whether it's impervious or not, my guess is that 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 you don't have the retention solved yet. So let's solve the retention and 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 come up with something that works for everybody. That's how I feel about it, and that's what I try to.
Mayor, please.
Honestly, I like the idea of having fifteen hundred more people in town, spending money at the gas stations, at the restaurants, naturally helps out the economy. But we also have a citywide drainage flood study we did, we have over twelve million dollars worth of unfunded projects, flood projects. We don't want to add another project because a lot of this water, if I'm not mistaken, goes towards the creek and could impact the residents to the south, correct, John?
Well, I think the stormwater from this development goes two ways, some of it goes to the creek, some of it goes east into the marsh on the east side of Wooddale Road, south of Francis Grove.
Even this, I thought Lake Wooddale Road was a dividing line.
Well, I think one of those ponds goes under Wooddale Road.
Also.
And does empty into that marsh as well.
Alderman Jacob.
A question to Mr. Murmice, if we say, if I said yes tonight, are we going to hear our engineers tell us that it is going to cause flooding, or it's not going to cause flooding, or are we never going to hear that answer? You said it's a, this is kind of the first step leading to the second step. Again, I I'm all for creating jobs and bringing business, but if I'm voting for more flooding, my answer is no, but if you're telling me we're going to have our engineers look at this, and someone's going to show me a study that says, okay, we're going to be fine, then I'm all for it.
Let me, let me say this, I don't think, and Jeff, maybe you can help me with this. If they approve this today, and they just comply with all the other codes, ordinances, rules, and stuff, they don't have to come back to any other committee, am I correct?
Unless they, their ultimate plan would require any zoning relief, you know, they will have to get a stormwater management permit, which means they are going to have to give us full-blown engineering plans, stormwater plans, detention plans.
Right, but they don't have to go to any hearing, they're just going to submit the general stormwater plans that they would submit.
Correct, correct.
As long as our engineer looks at it and says they're okay, nobody on this council will ever see it again. That's that's the underlying question.
As long as they're in compliance with the zoning ordinance. Now, if they're proposing ninety percent lot coverage, they may end up back in front of you, because.
Are they proposing ninety percent lot coverage now?
I don't think with our most recent plans, but we need to resubmit to John.
Correct, and we'll do final lot calculations. If they're exceeding the maximum allowable lot coverage and are unable to revise their plans within, into compliance, they'll have to come back in front of you at that point. I guess you'll have to make the decision, do you consider permeable paving, permeable or impermeable lot coverage? So.
I thought we already addressed that in our UDO, didn't we already address that, that it's considered or not considered?
Well.
I mean, we've used it and we set it out as case studies and examples, and we keep bringing it up, and we've approved it, so I guess the gentleman over there could make the argument, you've already approved it twice, so why are you going to take it away from me?
Well, we were, what we approved was allowing staff to issue five permits for test cases, which I believe we've done. Four of those are residential, and one is in the industrial park, and those are being monitored, but at this point in time, permeable pavement is still considered lot coverage in the calculations.
Okay. Alderman Roy Wesley.
You know, we're having a rough time renting this building out, we know that. Me and Ward Two, same with you, Art, we know about flooding, we got the worst of it. We spend hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars on engineering, and think they're the experts to tell us, yeah, they make mistakes, everyone makes mistakes. The association, why doesn't the association pay for the study? Why don't you, I mean, you own a detention pond, the association should pay for it. It's your, it's your responsibility, too.
Well, they already, to be fair, they already paid for it. They already did the study, the the city gave them the requirements to meet, and they met those requirements. Now we want to change them, there's a benefit. I don't see anything wrong with with looking at it and going, this is a viable alternative and it's going to work or or not work. I don't know that we have to, how far we have to go to get to that number, I I'm not a an engineer that works with flooding or anything, but it seems to me that we, we already know the the amount of land and the amount of coverage that you're looking at, that it should be, at least reasonably so, compared to all the expenses you've incurred already.
Mr. Wood, if I can, if I can make the point that the the actual work that's been done since the association was founded is in the in the village's hand. The village is the one that can that can look at it and give us the the records, or give whoever wants the records, the ability to do that work. But you don't have those records, or I've asked for those records, and I, and Paula has has given me what she what she has, but she indicated that after nineteen eighty-six or eighty-seven, those records don't exist anymore in the village's purview. I'm more than happy to help with that, I'm not, I don't want to pay for it, but I'm more than happy to help. I'm not here to to be an obstructionist, I'm here to be a help.
Right.
So, and and I think that that is a logical thing to do, is to figure out what the actual base is since the, you know, since the development has continued. And and that's all I'm proposing.
Right, and and I would agree, given the fact that the city, that 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 was the reasons they enacted the berm and the conservation area and all that, that it would just be prudent that we looked at that number. That being said, Mr. Murmice.
Just a quick question. I was obviously involved in the flood study that we did a couple of years ago, I've been around for a couple of the floods, you've obviously been around for a long time.
Be gentle.
When this was first formed, longer than me, that's what I'm saying, Mr. Forrest as well. Since I've been here, I've never had any, this hasn't been a flooding concern, so has there been floods in the area? I don't know if anybody.
But, I mean, I understand the question, but maybe because we have the berm and the conservation area, we don't have the flood. That's kind of the point of the whole debate here, that if we take that away, are now we suddenly going to see flooding that we didn't see?
But it's flooding.
When we know actively we have greater and more numerous flooding events than we've had in the past, they they only increased, they haven't decreased. Mr. Forrest.
I'm only aware of a couple of isolated incidents where buildings have gotten any water, and that's typically because there's storms, so our inlets have been blocked and the water is backed up, so the system is not functioning like it's supposed to. A couple of the buildings in this park over the years have had additions put on, and again, to be in compliance with the stormwater management requirements, they've actually increased or installed some onsite storage to handle their own water. Now, as, you know, the owners of this building go forward and do their parking plan and their stormwater management plan for review by Baxter Woodman, they may find out that they have to provide onsite storage. But whatever they're going to need to do to be in compliance with the stormwater management ordinance, they're going to have to do.
Mayor, please.
John, let me ask a quick question. We're talking about taking out green space and whatnot, but nobody ever said anything about putting a parking garage in the back of those buildings, on top of the lots that are already there, right?
That was talked about earlier, I think with Jack, and I think initially the response was, would be cost prohibitive, but maybe he can elaborate on that?
It would be, it would be cost prohibitive. We, we looked at doing, you know, on seven-year, ten-year lease, the economics wouldn't work to go ahead and do what it costs to do a real estate transaction in suburban Chicago and build the parking deck, it's just not economically feasible for the property.
But Mr. Rudin is.
Yes.
Okay, so you did that on a ten-year lease, but you're going to own the building theoretically for longer than that, so when you spread that over thirty years, because it is an improvement to the property, it's not just for that particular lease, because you're saying the building requires the extra parking anyway, right?
Well, this, you know, this this problem is not specific to Oakwood Commerce Center. This is a problem that's going on everywhere in suburban Chicago. The parking was built to three point three, three point four per thousand, it used to be two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty square feet per person. We now have people like Wells Fargo and HSBC who have a sea of cubicles, and they're taking a lot less space. The problem that we have is, at eighteen thousand dollars a space for a garage, with the rents that we're receiving with the cost of the transaction from tenant improvement allowances to commissions, et cetera, it's just cost prohibitive. We would see a lot of garages go up, landlords would be happy to put them up, they're economically feasible in the short run.
Right, and and from our side, we have the kind of the same opinion, we're spending that kind of money on stormwater issues, so all those things that change, you know, kind of shift the expense to the city, you know? And I get that you're in a hard spot, you do need, it's not deniable that you need more spaces there, I I get that, it's not lost, it's, you know, how many and can we, you know, live together on this project and and not have any, create any issues? That's the big question.
Jack, what's the ratio at the old Motorola building?
Vaumann?
Yeah.
Five per thousand.
That's all?
Uh huh. I mean, to the best of my knowledge, I'm not on the property. But I I think one of the things, you know, to consider is, when we went to John, although we filed a formal application the first time and went through with Ross, when John rejected us, we've come back and talked about the retention that we've had to do, we've had a landscape plan, we talked to you about the trees, we're willing to work, we want to work, we're not looking to ask for additional variances, at least not to the best of my knowledge, and again, unfortunately, our parking engineer's out of town. So we're looking to work with the village, and as you said, if it requires onsite, if we're talking pervious, whatever it is, we want to have that conversation, we're just trying to come up with some area where we can add two hundred spaces or so.
Mayor, please.
And I keep hearing pervious, and we did the five test sites, and the question came up, well, is our building department going to have the capacity, go out there and start checking these and making sure they're not filled and whatnot, and we really didn't have a set plan to cover those types of things. John, I mean, if we go forward with this type of stuff, we're going to have to have some type of checks and balances to make sure property owners are keeping up with, keeping those pervious surfaces clean, otherwise, they. to make sure property owners are keeping up with, keeping those pervious surfaces clean, otherwise they become impervious, correct?
Mr. Forrest.
Yes, I would agree. Yeah, there would have to be a regular maintenance plan filed with the city, and...
But we don't have any, anything on the books as of right now.
Correct.
Because we just did those five test sites.
Correct. I mean, informally, staff has re-inspected that industrial installation a couple of times since it was installed. It still seems to be operating, you know, per design. But, no, I, again, we would probably want some kind of a formal maintenance plan from the property owner, and then we would have to schedule, whether it's annual or twice a year, inspections to do that.
Alderman Jacob.
I guess, I'm going back to my original question. I think Art kind of said the question, but if I said yes to this today, am I gonna hear about this from our engineer or hear some kind of answer on, yes, this is gonna be fine, there's not gonna be any flooding issues here? Or this isn't gonna cause flooding? Or are we gonna have somebody tell us that?
Mr. Forrest.
You would be told that after the city engineer does a complete plan review of what's going to be their final submittal for approval. If the city engineer approves it, we'll be in a position to issue the permit. If he rejects it, it will go back to their design engineer, he'll have to revise it and then have it rereviewed. If you, if the council wants to be informed, the results of the stormwater review, I don't see that as being an issue, we could do that.
I would be in favor if at least we could see that. I mean, I don't wanna make this decision blind, I'd like to hear an answer.
Well, you can see it, but you can't comment on it, it doesn't, you can't change it. They send it to you, you're gonna be able to see it, just as you can see any permit application. You just won't be able to affect any change. So, that being said, it's really, do you wanna move forward or not move forward? Eugene Wesley, do you have a question?
Yeah, I, I have a, you know, I have never seen any water in that area at all, and, and you know what? Flooding issues. You know, when we had a flood that took out our bowling alley and every park and those apartment buildings and that, I don't know what year that was, I can't even remember, but that area sure went under too, if, if there was an issue there in, in the drainage. My, my question to you, John, is there a way that they could submit it and then, and I, I guess it would be attorney's question, could they bring that to us before, for us to comment on the, on the stormwater stuff and give our blessing at the commit, uh, in the council level? I mean, in a way, I'm, I, I'm in favor of this because it's gonna create more jobs in the community. But I also hear the concern there. So, is, is it by our ordinance that once we pass this tonight, that they don't come back here at all? Is there a way that we could make them come back to us to show us the stormwater report from the engineer, our engineer to review it and us give some comments back to them about this to make sure it doesn't happen? Legally, could we do that? That would probably be a path.
Council review is what you're asking.
Right, that's all I'm asking. Are we, could we put a council review on this?
I think that ultimately would be a question for the city attorney, but as Alderman Wood said, I mean, again, specifically tonight, what they're looking for is, is the city council willing to remove that restriction to allow the parking? If the city council's willing to do that, then it's a financial decision for the applicant. Does he wanna go forward and have his stormwater, his final site plan and his stormwater management plan prepared and brought in for review? 'Cause it's not gonna cost him a hundred dollars or a thousand dollars, you're talking about a substantial outlay. If he knows the city is not going to remove this restriction, why would he spend the money? But, again, that's why I'm, I'm saying, the point tonight is, will the city council consider revising an existing ordinance? And to revise the section that prohibits the parking within fifty feet of, you know, Wooddale Road? That's really the question that's before you tonight.
Let me just say, to your thing that we haven't had flooding, I, I have to say, yeah, maybe that's because we have those things in place. And that's why there's no flooding. I just think it's easy for us to work together to try to resolve this thing. I think we all wanna do the, the deal. I don't see why we can't kind of help ease the mind of the council. We all recognize that a lot of the properties are outdated or substandard in today's marketplace, we get that. But we can't bear the brunt of all those issues, i.e. stormwater issues. And we need a, I gotta answer to the people that put me here, that we did our best, and when we did reports and stuff years ago, they put those things in place, and, and maybe we can get around those today, you know? So maybe, and maybe if you're asking, I, I don't remember what the number is, a hundred and fifty spaces, maybe you'll effectively get a hundred and thirty-five. I don't think that was a deal killer. But I think if we could work together on this, we'd get to where we wanna go. Alderman, no, Roy Wesley.
You know, you wanna, whoever, if you wanna sit here and vote no for it, might as well just tell every, every business owner, bypass Wooddale, go to Bensonville, go to Itasca, don't come, don't come to Wooddale. Don't come to Wooddale, because we're gonna make it difficult for you. It's not ridiculous. You know, we're, 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 we want, we wanna help businesses, we wanna bring in businesses, this is how you do it. So, this is how you increase, this is how you bring businesses in, this is how you bring people in. They shop here, they buy gas here, they go to Target. And right now, I'm calling the question.
Alderman, or, or, Mayor, please.
The question means...
John.
Robert's rules.
John.
Okay, roll call.
Alderman Lazara?
No.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
No.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
No.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
I think the same. Items considered at future meetings, Potter Street, these mid-agreements in three weeks, July twenty-four. Simba agreement, July twenty-four, Tony Comed Lines, July twenty-fourth, and Dylan Flock Tower, if you want your answers. Anyone you wanna add anything? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
I think I'm up next. Public Health and Safety Judicial, judicial, yeah, okay. Let the record show that same people are here. Motion, make a motion to approve the minutes, June twenty-six, twenty-fourteen. Can I have a second somewhere? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Jeff, you got to beat Greg's record, go.
Sure, the council had requested, the mayor had mentioned at the last council meeting, some information on filing for an advisory referendum in November, if we still had enough time to do it on the ballot, and if other communities were doing it, what wording could be? The advisory referendum would be, obviously, trying to express Wooddale's concerns with the O'Hare Airport noise increase lately. So, what we did was, we did reach out to the attorney. We do meet the deadline date of August eighteenth, if we pass it, at a council meeting before August eighteenth. And staff included some language that some other communities around the area have passed or are considering. So, we're looking for some direction if you also want to do an advisory referendum.
Mike Sizarsky.
I've been picked up with advisory referendum, but also, if there were a way to do something else, all of you...
Why are you looking at him?
Typically, when we do a referendum, I think we put, we do a maller that we're having a referendum. So, we've done that in the past. We've also spoken to other communities surrounding us, and they are aware that we're considering and that Bensonville's considering and that others are considering. And they are also posing this question to their boards to see, you know, the more people that, that do this, the thought is, the more pressure we can put on to, you know, make our voice heard. We'll advertise if this is what you wanna do. We'll get the word out there that the referendum is out there. We already did the citywide petition a couple of months back, and I believe we got around twenty-eight hundred residents, households to sign that petition. So, this is in addition to that petition, another measure to help make our voice heard against the, the noise.
I'll second that. Motion was made by Mike, who was second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You want something else? Your time's up.
No, just, just to clarify, so what'll end up happening is, the attorney has to draft the necessary paperwork to pass at next week's council to allow us to go, place this on the ballot. So, it'll be a, a resolution authorizing for this to be placed on the ballot, but we will need some exact language. So, do these examples, is one of the examples listed in here favorable? We'd like some direction, just one of the Bensonville ones, or maybe work a hybrid of the Bensonville ones?
I would try to keep it pretty much the same uniform across the board, every other towns. That's, that's my opinion.
Okay, so we'll go with Bensonville, okay.
Anything else? Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Could I, could I just add one, one thing, and I know it ain't on the agenda, but I, I really need to look at, it's under Public Health and Safety, the invasion of mosquitoes through our town. Obviously, just for you to know, we have another spray coming. The only thing I'd like to do is, I know our contract only says four mosquito sprays. I wanna be able to make a recommendation that, since we will not have that many meetings in August and July, I would like, like us as a council, give the, the staff the authorization to continue to monitor the spraying, and if we need additional application to be spraying, to go ahead and do it.
One second. The mayor says, oh, John.
That's why, that's why I like Alderman Wesley. We're on the same wavelength here. There's actually a report already typed going out tomorrow. Mosquitoes are a big nuisance this year with the weather, the way it is. We are about to have our final spraying next Tuesday. Another spraying is only about three thousand dollars. So, what I was gonna say in that memo is, staff's gonna proactively do that under my authority, because the measures are so high, and we're just gonna notify council, 'cause it's under ten, that if we need to do an extra spray, we're already preparing to do an extra spray.
So, let me follow up. So, does that mean we only doing one more spray? Or I'm looking at giving the authorization to continue to spray?
We, we can do up to three more sprays with, without council authorization, so we think we should have enough with the three additional sprays.
Okay, I'm sorry, that's okay. So, we're treating the sewers too? Yeah, the dollar rates.
I defer to Matt on that one.
So, if you get bit, the city manager. Must be mad.
Thank you, Alderman Wesley. The, the biscuit briquettes into the catch basins is not included. The spraying is the only thing that's included for that three thousand dollars. That doesn't mean that we can't get a price on doing another briquet treatment, and we can look into that, and we can talk to Clark about that, doing that for us.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, we can do that, I'll reach out to them tomorrow, and we'll get a pricing on that.
Anything else? Okay. Motion for adjournment?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm done.
Like to call the Public Works Committee to order. Roll caller, no, the same people are here, I think they're... I just kinda looked down, and, uh, let's do roll call.
Alderman Lazara?
Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Winger?
Here.
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Woods? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Here.
We have a quorum. Like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting on June twelfth, twenty-fourteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, that passes. Report and recommendation, pay request, parcel number six, William Brothers Construction, Inc., for the NWWTP Upgrade Phase One B Project, and the not to exceed amount of six hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars and forty-five cents. That is my motion to...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, that passes. Report and recommendation, pay request, parcel number seven, William Brothers Construction, Inc., for the NWWTP Upgrade Phase One B Project, and the not to exceed amount of one million, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-five cents. That is my motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, that passes. Report and recommendation, insulation of an electronic door access system at the water, wastewater treatment plant, and not to exceed amount of eighteen thousand, two hundred dollars.
I'll second that motion.
You second the motion?
Yeah.
Any questions? Eugene?
My question, eighteen thousand, two hundred, is that the whole, complete, all the buildings? Or are we looking for additional?
Matt?
This is, thank you, Chairman Lazara. Eugene, this project is only for Building Fifty, which is the lower building, or the, the control buildings, and the new administration building. The other buildings in question, all the rest of the buildings are being built under Phase One B. The FOB system will be included in that construction. So, that'll be part of the Williams Brother payment that just came through in the future. But this is only for Building Fifty and the new administration building.
And the reason, my...
Go ahead, Eugene.
And the reason why this is coming forward is because, I tell you, I asked for this for security, and, and the reason why this is added now is because in the first phase, when we did it, we added administration building, and we didn't count on that. So, I'm, again, I, I second the motion, I, I see no problem with this.
Mike, go ahead. Go ahead.
Yes, it's the same company, M and M Lock is the same company that did the installation and everything at this building. As of right now, I, I do not know that answer for sure, but I know that this Building Fifty and the admin building will be done by the same company that did this building.
We don't know who they...
All...
Is that price sent to the other buildings and into the cost of construction, or...
Yes.
Why was this one separate from the construction?
Go ahead, Matt.
Because as, as I understand, this was not included during the original construction phase for either Building Fifty or the administration building, or it would've been done all at the same time. Basically, it's a new building that we're retrofitting to, to include these electronic state plates and the, and the FOB systems.
Go ahead, Peter.
Just to be clear, all, all the buildings will have it eventually, or no?
Matt?
Yes, all the buildings that, that need to have monitored access will have them. So, I, I'm not exactly sure if all of them, the, the, all the new buildings should have them. There will be the Annex Building, which is existing building, which is, is not scheduled for that right now. We may look at doing that in the future, but as of right now, all the new buildings should, will have the, the FOB system.
Art, did you have a question?
Well, it was, it's almost answered, it was this, are the gates and all the other main areas that we're concerned with and should be secure, are, are those gonna be covered? I get some of the older buildings might not, but they're less...
Go ahead, Matt.
All the buildings will be covered, the gate will be a different type of system, but the FOBs, just like we have here, little scanners, will be on all the buildings itself.
What system, will the gate system be the FOB so that we have a report? I'm assuming this is all computerized so that we can track it, so...
Yeah, to...
Matt, go ahead.
To be honest, I'm not exactly sure which system we're putting in for the gates at this time.
All right, thanks.
If it's a card or if it's a push button, but everything will be, um, tropical. If it's a card or if it's a push button, but everything will be tropical.
All right, we should do a roll call on this.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley? FOBs?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
That passes. Report and recommendation, repairs to the drainage at the northeast island of the city hall parking lot and the not to exceed amount of nineteen thousand dollars. That is my motion.
Second.
Any questions? Mike?
Matt, do we know what this is caused from? We're not gonna, is this gonna be a fix, or is this a weep, or what is, I mean?
Matt?
We believe that it is underground, just drainage flow from groundwater. We, there is no water main in this area. There's no sanitary sewer main in this area. There's no storm sewer in this area. We have no underst, basic understanding of where the water's coming from, except for where it's at is at a lower elevation. It's coming down and there's some, something that's causing the water to bubble up in that low spot and come up into the, that island and then, and then disperse over the parking lot area, which causes icing and other hazardous conditions. So what the purpose of this project is, is to dig into that island and capture that water in place and then dump it into our storm sewer system, which will allow it to not overflow and hopefully cross our fingers that this is, that this works to its fullest capacity. We won't have any icing issues this winter.
So Matt, that kinda goes back to what we were saying about unexpected water. You know, even though it's been engineered, you still have water that, you know, occurs that is unexpected. So I'd like to, I'm sorry, Pete, go ahead.
Don't we also have an issue in the southwest part of the parking lot too? When you pull in by the police, seems like there's always water sitting over there too.
Matt?
There does seem to be a little bit of water coming out over there. It's not nearly as much as this one is and it's also in an area that is not as highly trafficked as where this spot is out here. If this does work, and like we think that it will, and obviously since we're bringing it forward to the board to do this project, we may look at doing something similar to that in that southwest corner. But this, this area is very high visibility. We had, every morning I had one of our public works people over here prior to the start of the business day to make sure, to pour more salt and more salt and more salt, just to make sure that it was safe for people like Jeff and Jeremy and the guys that come here every day, that they weren't slipping and sliding and breaking their heads coming to work in the morning.
Do you have follow-up?
Well, I would just like to say, if this does work, we definitely have to look at that other issue as well. A lot of cars drive there.
Most definitely.
Kirsty?
Thank you. Initially, cleaner council was looking at this area as a rain garden, but it, I think we have other opportunities on city hall property. It, as the committee reviewed the other day, so I'm concluding that it's probably best to just get it fixed and stabilized in that plant over, over what we've done. Would you concur that this is probably not the best site to then do a rain garden on top of?
Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, that'll probably be a good idea. We may be able to do something to that area as well. We're in the process of planning for the next CIP, kind of an overall city hall beautification project, we'll call it. Because there are some things that we need to do to these islands. Obviously, that island out there, once it gets torn up, we're gonna need to do something to make it look nice again. So something will be done there, whether it's a rain garden or not, or just something else to beautify. It'll be part of the whole entire plan, though.
Well, I'm sorry, just as a follow, cleaner council is looking to get something done by the fall, you know, ideally, so... Is this a good candidate for it, or no?
Probably not that location.
Got it.
Okay, Art?
Yeah, Matt, you said this, that's a low elevation right there?
That seems to be where the water wants to come out at, is in the middle of that island. So whether there's something blocking it in there, maybe there's a footing in there that the water's hitting and then it's coming up. Obviously, that water's coming up within that mulch bed. I'm not exactly sure why it's coming up there, but the goal of this project is to capture that water before it comes above ground. And so the catch basin will be, actually be below grade. You won't even see it, and then piped over to the storm sewer system.
So is that, do you know is that lower in elevation than like seven hundred Wooddale Road?
Matt, go ahead.
Maybe we could get a little more water, we could have a fountain?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Just, you know, give each other.
Right, okay. Right, did you have a question?
Did you do, did you do engineering on this already?
Uh, yes, yes. Engineering's been done on this already.
So it's gonna, it's gonna work, right?
Um, the, our...
Do we need to do a study on it?
Go ahead, Matt.
Our friends from Robinson Engineering have done the study on this, so I'm sure Aaron and Steve have done a good job.
Okay, so I want no mistakes.
Okay, let's call a vote, please. Roll call.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
That passes. Report and recommendation, award engineering services to Robinson Engineering for the Hemlock sidewalk, sidewalk project and the not to exceed amount of fifteen thousand dollars. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Roll call? Oh, Peter?
I just wanna make sure, we're talking about doing this since August, September, October, is that, could be two later, is that okay still?
Matt?
That should be, that should be perfect to do this. It's just a sidewalk project, so it's basically just cutting out, forming it up and laying the concrete. Pretty, pretty easy project.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
That passes. Report and recommendation, RJN Group to provide construction observation services for Manhole Rehabilitation Project and a not to exceed amount of twenty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. That is my motion. Do I have a second? Any questions? Roll call?
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano? Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
That passes. Report and recommendation, purchase of a two-ton asphalt hot box and the not to exceed amount of twenty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. That is my motion.
Second.
Questions? Roy?
Budget item?
Matt?
Yes, sir. Budgeted twenty-five thousand.
Was there only one source for this?
Go ahead, Matt.
Yes, sir. The, this pro, this piece of equipment, there are other hot boxes out there. There's none that meet the specifications that we were looking for. This has burners that are attached directly to the box, so that when you raise and lower the bed through a high, through the lift system, the burners are still attached to the box at all times, which allows the asphalt to stay heated at all times versus other ones that have the burners that are attached to the frame of the trailer. So when you lift up the box, it is away from that, away from that flame, which doesn't allow the asphalt to stay heated at a, all the time. Plus, it also has some other advantages. This has a plug-in situation where we don't have to have the propane burners burning all night long. We can plug it in to keep the asphalt warm overnight, so that we can get it, leave right in, early in the morning to go out and do hot, to do patching versus allowing the asphalt time to warm up in the morning.
Mayor?
Matt, I wanted to ask you this before the meeting, but I was a little busy. When we pour, when we do patches, how do we compact the asphalt? I know we don't have a big roller. What do we got?
We do have a big roller, but for little patches like this, it's usually a hand tamper. We just hamp it down.
Okay, so we got, because one time a resident told me, somebody filled a pot hole in front of their house and the guy ran over with the tire from the truck.
That'll do it too, but normally you either hand tap it or you can take the back of the shovel and smack it down if it's a small enough hole.
Peter?
In your memo, it says that no one else has anything like this. Typically in business, usually competitors tend to follow suit. Is this some kinda, the technology, is this some kinda brand-new technology that may or may not work, or?
Matt?
It's not new technology. Mr. Rubich, who is our assistant director, has purchased one of these in his former established, or former place of business and used it for a couple of years. The burner, where the location of the burner is very important to keep that hot and that's what is one of the big things with this. The second thing is that the frame, which, it's kinda weird to say it this way, but they use a channel frame that's instead of a tubular frame, and the tubular frames have the ability to rust because now you don't get painting on the inside of the tube, so they rust from the inside out versus a channel, which you can get paint and stuff on all of it. So just little things like that make this, make this not, yes, there are other people out there that have them. Falcon is another big person that has this type of hot box, but they don't have the little things that make this such a much better piece of equipment and something that, that's why we're bringing this piece of equipment forward.
Pete, follow.
But you said Mr. Rubich has worked with this type of equipment?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky? Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
That passes. Report and recommendation, LED streetlight installment on Irving Park Road and the amount not to exceed a hundred and seventy-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars. And before I ask anyone if they wanna approve this, Matt, can you explain to us why you decided to bring this item up now? Go ahead, Matt.
Okay, yes. About a month and a half ago, I became aware of the DCEO incentive for additional street lighting that could be done under a DCEO grant. Part of the grant, or part of the, the, part of falling into the DCEO was that there's a ten percent kicker rebate if we do it before October thirty-first. And looking at that, talking to some people, talking to our supplier, there was some question about doing this earlier with the original streetlight project to do LEDs, when we did LEDs for the rest of the town, prior to, prior to me coming to work here. The reason why Irving Park Road at that time was not done was because of engineering work that had to be done for, to make sure the LEDs, because they weren't approved by I dot standards. Now LEDs have been approved by I dot standards. They will be utilized along the Elgin-O'Hare Expressway corridor. So at that time, we thought, hey, it's a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollar project. I know it's not budgeted. I understand that it's not budgeted, but we had the ability to get up to seventy thousand dollars worth of incentives. At that time, it was, you know what, I can't make that decision just to kill the project. So we'll bring it to the board, bring it to the Public Works Committee. I'm not gonna say I support it. I'm not gonna say any, I'm not gonna make a recommendation on that side of it. But to not bring a seventy thousand dollar discount to, to the committee, I felt was something that I should not, should, I should do.
Matt, if we pass on this, there's always incentives, okay? I mean, we probably don't even know in a year from now what kind of incentive that we can possibly get. Could even be more. I have a problem with passing a not, unbudgeted. So I'll ask if anybody wants to make any... Eugene, I'm gonna ask you first.
All right. First of all, it's not a budget item. Second of all, we don't own all the streetlights on Irving Park Road. We own a lot of them, but we don't own them all. So if the state ain't gonna put LED lights in there, so if I'm concerned, for seventy thousand dollars, it's gonna cost us a hundred thousand dollars and I get, and today in the email, today I got, that I signed up for, there's tons of grant money down the line for this light. So I'm gonna make a motion that we deny this, to move forward with this project, because it's not a budget item, so that is...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pause.
There were some questions.
Okay, oh, Mike, go ahead.
But you still, just like Eugene said, you still have Irving Park Road gonna be done by I dot, so they're gonna take the lights down anyway, correct?
Got it.
And put up the new light poles?
I dot, the lights, once they put them up, we pay for electricity on them, we pay for the maintenance of them. So if we want those done, we're gonna have to, the city's gonna have to be the one that does that in the future.
Once they're done, once they come back and they put up the new poles, they're gonna charge us for that anyway, right? They put up a new pole, a new light in it, it's gonna become ours anyway after that. So therefore, we pay for LEDs now and then they take them down and put up new poles, new poles instead of wood poles. But they're gonna be LED anyway, so we just threw away a hundred thousand dollars.
Go ahead.
Possibly, yes.
Yeah.
I guess I, with my job, I do work with DECO and typically DECO doesn't give you money unless you're gonna save money. Do we know what the savings is gonna be here and what the payback period would be on our, the city's investment if we did this?
Nine years is the payback.
What was it on our regular lighting project in the whole city?
That was like two or two and a half years. It was a more significant.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we have a...
Motion, we have a second.
Motion, and then we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pause. That fails. So, does that pass me? Okay, so here, motion passes. Denied, okay. Report and recommendation, contract award to John Neary Construction Company, Inc., for the stormwater improvements in the Woodside subdivision and not to exceed amount of a hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and two dollars. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. I have a question.
Go ahead, Eugene.
My question is, is the, maybe I missed it here. Who is overseeing that construction project?
Go ahead, Matt.
And what is the price for that?
Robinson Engineering is overseeing the construction of it. It's thirty-five thousand dollars was the price of design and contractual, construction management.
And that's the one we passed before.
Right, and that's included.
That's, that's all.
Right, okay. Roll call, please. Oh, Pete?
Does John Neary Construction done any work for the city of Wooddale?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, they have, and I've worked with them in the past too, and they're a reputable company.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
That passes. Items to be considered at future meetings. Anyone? Mike?
This is for Jeff and Matt. I talked to Matt about it already. You know, I noticed, Matt did a great job and so did staff and your public works went through the last storm of cleaning the drainage systems and everything and not soon after you guys cleared all those out, I noticed a lot of grass caught up in there again. If you could send it through a letter to the magazine, not to shoot your grass out into the, I mean, nobody, a bunch of ones I saw, nobody cleaned it. So all the rain did was grab it, send it down to the catch basins again and cause the damming again.
We can make that, make sure that gets put in the next magazine.
Go ahead, Matt. You know, I'd like to possibly put an item on here, and I'm not sure exactly how the city's gonna go about even doing this, but I think we should first start with investigating a lot of our water channels that lead away from our city. I actually have been going around and looking at these and I'm noticing shopping carts, I'm noticing buckets, and this is all by inlets and outlets. I think there's really something that has to be addressed on the way that we take care of our waterways, the little canals that run through especially the Ward Three area. So Matt, help me out here. How do we, how do we go about investigating this? And how do we go about getting permission to clean our own waterways that help our entire city?